Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's media briefing. I'm Abby Jaikman from Notts County Council from the comms team. And I'm here with Steve Thorne from the City Council comms team and Alex Ball from NHS comms. You know the panel, but I will introduce them for you for the benefit of the recording. And we have Jonathan Gribbin, who's the Director of Public Health at Nottinghamshire County Council, David Johns, interim Director of Public Health at Nottingham City Council, and Amanda Sullivan, who is the accountable officer for Nottingham and Nottinghamshire CCG. Welcome. So we follow the normal format, which is that the panel will run through updates of what's happening in the areas that they cover. And then we'll come on to questions from members of the media who are present and who have questions. So I'm going to hand over to Jonathan to start us off. Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, Abby, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us again today. This morning, I've got very positive news about Nottinghamshire, about vaccinations, and some further special arrangements that you'll hear about shortly in regard to the vaccination programme. And I'm also very pleased to say that in our hospitals, the number of new COVID-19 admissions remains low, as do the number of beds occupied by confirmed cases of coronavirus. But what we see on case rates, more specifically, does give me this morning some cause to sound a note of caution. In Nottinghamshire County, over the last week, overall, we've seen more than 200 cases of COVID-19. And that equates to a headline rate of 25.6 per 100,000, much lower, of course, than what we saw a few months ago, but considerably higher than the 15 per 100,000 that we reported a week ago. And in fact, we've seen some really very steep rises in many of our districts, amongst them including in Rushcliffe, which has seen pretty much a fourfold increase in the number of cases over the last week or so. And already, we know that in the coming days, we're going to see further increases in some of our districts and boroughs. So more specifically, what we see in Rushcliffe at the moment is a headline rate of 40.3 per 100,000. In Gedling, it has a rate of 35.6 per 100,000. New Con Sherwood, 34.3 per 100,000. In our other districts, Brockstow has a rate of 21 per 100,000, Ashfield 19.5, Bassett Law 17.9, and Mansfield at the moment, a rate of 9.1 per 100,000. But across all of our districts and boroughs, we will see increases over the next several days. What we've observed over the last week or so are cases in a range of settings. Often, it's where people have been socialising. Some of the settings that we've been working with include workplaces and schools. And in terms of ages, in particular, we see cases amongst young people of secondary school age and adults under the age of 40. Now, it's true to say that the link between COVID-19 and hospitalisation has definitely been weakened. But these COVID-19 rates are rising steeply. And many of those cases are in people and in age groups who have yet to be vaccinated. This weekend, I'm joining with health leaders from across Nottinghamshire to promote a walk-in weekend to grab a jab, because we want everyone over the age of 25 who's been offered the vaccine to benefit from its protection, and especially people in their 40s. And Amanda will provide some more information about that in due course. Of course, this weekend, we also see the start, finally, of the Euro 2020 championship. And that's going to be a time for people across Nottinghamshire to enjoy together. And if you are getting together with other people, I'm urging you this weekend and in the coming days and weeks of the championship to ensure that the party doesn't become an outbreak. And I'm asking everyone to keep their defence really tight. And that means social distancing. So if you're meeting up indoors, you've got an opportunity to position the furniture before everyone gathers, before the match starts, just to make sure that you maintain that social distancing. Hand washing remains a basic control measure, which is so effective at stopping the spread. And we want to give fresh emphasis to that. Get the windows open so that you can get some fresh air in and also limit the spread of the virus in that way. If you are going out to watch a screening of a match at a pub, say, we want you to enjoy that, but we would ask you to make sure that you register at the venue. You will have to remain seated at your table during that time. Please, would you make it your business to help the landlord and his or her staff to keep the whole thing COVID safe? And with that, I'll pass on to my colleague, David Johns.
Thank you, Jonathan. So in Nottingham, in the seven days to the 5th of May, we saw 155 cases. So this is almost double the number of cases that we saw in the previous seven days. And the case rate in Nottingham City is now 44.6 cases per 100,000. And we will see that case rate continue to rise over the next few days. Rates have also continued to rise across England, with the England average above that of Nottingham at 50.3 per 100,000. But as we've seen in other parts of the country, rates have increased particularly among 12- to 17-year-olds and most recently, the 18- to 22-year-old age band. The communities continue to respond well. Schools in particular continue to do a great job in responding swiftly and managing cases within bubbles. And we continue to work with schools linked to multiple cases across numerous bubbles to support actions such as offers of targeted testing. But while case rates amongst these younger cohorts have increased, the number of cases in our 60s and over age band remains low, with no active care home outbreaks in Nottingham City. The spread of the virus can still be slowed. And we still have an opportunity to influence the impact of a rising cases on the NHS. And now more than ever, we need to all play our part. So it looks like we have a lovely weekend ahead of us. And if you are having people around for a barbecue outside, please continue to try and maintain social distancing. And remember that only six people or two households are allowed to socialise inside. If people are coming over, they should try to remain outside where possible. The weekend will also see the start of the Euros. Council colleagues have communicated with venues in the city showing the match. And we know they've been taking steps to create a safe environment that is in line with the current restrictions. So whether you're a Welshman like me and watching Wales play on Saturday and/or watching England on Sunday, if you can please support those venues by abiding by the measures they have in place this weekend, it would be a great help to everyone in Nottingham City. And please remember that if you are having your mates around to watch the matches, only six people or two households can do so inside. And that the simple act of opening a window can help reduce that risk of transmission. If those attending are taking part in that regular testing using those free rapid lateral flow tests, then this is also a great way we can further reduce the risk. And hopefully, that's something that people can start now and continue to do all the way through to the 11th of July, where hopefully we see one of our teams in the final. So we continue to work in partnership with NHS to make it easier to get people vaccinated as well. And the message on vaccinations really does remain a simple one, which is now is the time to be vaccinated. And it's particularly important if you are 40 years and over and have yet to take up that offer. So I want to thank everyone who has been vaccinated for doing their bit, be it to protect yourself, family, child, school, or because you want to keep Nottingham moving forward. So I'd just like to thank everyone for doing that and for taking part in the regular testing and getting tested as soon as you recognise any symptoms. I'll stop there and hand over to Amanda.
Thank you. Morning. So the vaccine programme is vital in our fight against the pandemic. And I'm really pleased to say that we've reached a landmark this week. We have exceeded a million vaccine doses in our area. And this is really a remarkable achievement. And it shows, I think, the level of commitment and energy of all the staff, the volunteers and the community leaders, who have all come together to achieve this fantastic landmark. We've also seen this week big jumps in the number of people who are fully vaccinated and having received their second doses. So that is also really good news. As we currently stand, 70% of our over 16 population have now received their first dose, which is great. And 52% of over 16s are now fully vaccinated, having received both doses. In the over 30s, this figure rises to 65%, so that is really good. So a tremendous effort, but still a way to go. And we are still in a race against time to save lives and to get people vaccinated. So we do have a walk-in weekend this weekend, where you can just come along and grab a jab. You can either come to the Forest Rec site in Mansfield or the Mansfield Wick site. And both are open 8 till 6 for walk-ins, Saturday and Sunday. Anybody over 25 who's eligible for a vaccine, carers also, anybody eligible who's previously had an invite, you can just walk in for your first dose. And the vaccine for all walk-ins of any age is Pfizer during this weekend event. And if you are yet to take up your invite, please do come along. There is free transport available, shuttle buses in both areas. And we really know there are still a lot of people in the younger cohorts, particularly the over 40s and over 30s, who are still to come forward for their vaccine invite. So if you haven't yet had your first dose, do come along. Bring your sun cream, just in case. I think the weather's going to be fantastic. But do come along and there is free transport, 8 till 6, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jonathan, David and Amanda. We've had hands up for questions. And I would just remind colleagues that when you're asking, if you're not asking questions, to make sure you're on mute. And everyone's got the cameras off, so that's fine. And I think the first hand up was Hugh Caswell. Hugh, over to you.
Morning, everyone. To both Directors of Public Health first, please. It sort of seems like we're in a very different situation now compared to this time a week ago in terms of infections. Of course, we find out on Monday what is going to happen on June the 21st. Do you think a complete removal of restrictions is a good idea at this time, with rates increasing as much as they are now? And presumably, you would expect rates to rise quite a bit further still if there is that total unlocking in just over a week's time?
I'll go first on that one, if that's all right, Jonathan. Yeah. So what I'm going to say is, I'm not sure me speculating about what will happen is too helpful for local businesses who are probably preparing on the 21st. I've no inside information or direct influence on the decision. And it is a difficult decision for anyone to make. The rising cases seen across the country, not just in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire, and the rapid rise of the Delta variant mean that it's a difficult decision. And no one wants another lockdown, given the great work that businesses have done to get us where we are at the current time. And so the decision is not really about taking a step back, it's about the speed at which we move forward. So and I think, you know, there's increasing evidence that the vaccination programme, as intended, is breaking that link between COVID cases, hospitalisations and deaths. But an increase in the number of cases risks mutations and the emergence of new variants that could always undermine that progress. So I think it's safe to say that at the moment, we're in a bit of a race between vaccinations and infection. So our collective role is really to hold back COVID infections and that transfer of transmission from person to person of COVID, whilst pushing on with the vaccination programme as much as we can towards that finish line. But I think regardless of the decision, I think the important thing to be clear about is that COVID isn't disappearing on the 21st of June. And there'll be plenty of public health work that we will continue to do, including supporting various settings with outbreaks and their response to COVID cases, regardless of what the decision is made.
Hugh, thanks for the question. I wonder if I might add a couple of comments myself. I think you, I may not be quoting you precisely, but I think you framed it in terms of a comment in regard to the prudence of the complete removal of all restrictions. And so I think what I'd want to say, well, actually, what I'd want to celebrate again is the effectiveness of the vaccine programme and the extent of the rollout that's been achieved in Nottinghamshire, led by our local NHS, but very much involving our communities and people right across Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. I think what we will need ongoing for the coming months is a combination of measures. So although that vaccine programme has been enormously effective, expecting vaccines on their own to deliver everything that we need to live safely and confidently with COVID-19, I think at the moment is unrealistic. And so I'm pleased even to take an opportunity like this morning to re-emphasise the benefit of a measure as simple as frequent hand washing. It's such a basic thing. And it can protect us not only from COVID-19 or from becoming a link in the chain, which leads to someone else ending up in hospital as a result of COVID-19, but protects us from a number of other infections, too. I think in all likelihood, we may need to continue with some form of social distancing in some situations and settings. And certainly, I don't think we should expect at a swipe to be doing away with arrangements to isolate right away if we get symptoms of COVID. And we should expect that testing arrangements will also be in place. So again, it's an opportunity for me anticipating what might lie beyond June the 21st, once again, to urge people in Nottinghamshire to take up the offer also of routine twice-weekly lateral flow tests, the rapid test that you can do yourself at home. Because doing that and then taking further action and isolating if you find that you are that you are positive is another way that we can stop the spread. And it's going to be these combination of things together, I think, which in coming months will keep us safe in Nottinghamshire and across the country.
Okay, thanks from both. Just one more question from me, but then I've also just been asked to ask one on behalf of Rob from East Midlands today as well, if that's okay. But just firstly from myself, again, to the Directors of Public Health, you have both sort of touched on this a little bit, but I'd just like to expand on it if possible. Because while, as you know, we've been talking about cases are going up, it seems like hospital admissions after a bit of a scare a couple of weeks ago look like they are flat or even decreasing. So to you, to what extent is that a sign of how the vaccine is doing precisely what it is intended to do?
Shall I kick off, David?
Yeah.
Amanda, I mean, in terms of any specifics around hospital activity, Amanda, I'll perhaps leave that to you. But yeah, I think we should be enormously encouraged that in general terms, in terms of activity and pressures arising from COVID-19 in our hospitals, things are at a much lower and more stable position now than they were back in the winter months. And in large measure, that is because of the vaccine programme and its rollout, together with the other measures that have been placed around that, the tests and isolates and the social distancing and hand washing and face covering that people have kept going with. But absolutely, I think the vaccine has been really key to that. With the increase of rates that we're seeing at the moment in Nottinghamshire, I think it would still be too early to make a call locally in regards to hospital pressures. There's generally, as you will recall from those winter months, a lag of a few weeks between rates rising in the community and then things happening in a hospital. So I think for that reason, I can understand why government will wish to wait until the last possible moment before it takes a final decision on what happens on or after June the 21st. But my understanding is that at the moment in Nottinghamshire, for the time being, in terms of hospital COVID activity, we remain in a good position.
Yeah, I don't have a huge amount to add, but yeah, I would say that the information from Amanda and NHS colleagues is around COVID and hospitalisations is a really positive picture at the present time. And I suppose the notice of caution is looking at other areas in the North West that are further ahead than us, who have seen case rates start in the younger age groups and bleed into some of those sort of over 40 age bands, where there is particularly that increased risk of hospitalisation in those that haven't yet sort of completed their vaccination programme. So for me, it just emphasises that importance of why we are doing things such as the walk-in weekend, because it is important that we get as many people vaccinated as possible and protect as many of those vulnerable citizens in Nottingham as we can.
Thank you. And then, as I said, just quickly, one from my colleagues at East Midlands today. This is for Amanda. Obviously, the 1 million mark is a fantastic milestone for jabs in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. But the vaccine uptake in that area is still the lowest in the region. So why is that?
So we are particularly focusing on areas and encouraging people to come forward where we do know that the uptake is a bit lower than some of the other areas. And that's why we've put the walk-in weekend in Nottingham and in Mansfield. And we really want to encourage everybody to come forward so everybody gets the opportunity to be protected. So we are really, you know, focusing in those areas for this weekend.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Hugh. I think the next hand was Matt Jarom.
Hello there. Hi all. First question to Amanda, really. I was quite interested in what you said about the over 30s and over 40s not getting their first jab. Is it okay just to repeat how many over 30s and over 40s have yet to come forward for their first jab? Why that might be and what implications that might have on Nottingham and Nottinghamshire going forward? And the second question is to David and Jonathan. Obviously, I don't want to be doom and gloom. I'm looking forward to the Euros as everybody else is. But I'm just wondering what implications the Euros could have on Nottingham, Nottinghamshire? And is that, how worried are you? And what's the potential of all the good work that you've done being perhaps ruined in one weekend?
So Amanda first, thank you.
Shall I start? So in terms of the numbers of people that are still or that have had their jab and still remaining, so for the 30 to 34-year-olds, 60% have had their first vaccine and 23.7% have had their second vaccine. For 35 to 39 age groups, 73.4% have had their first dose and 28.1 second dose. For the 40 to 44-year-olds, it's 84.1 for the first and 39.3 for the second. And then for 45 to 49, it's 81.6 and 42.8 for the second. We're really pleased, actually, this week, for the 45 to 49s, we've seen a really big jump in the people who are now fully vaccinated in that group. But as you can see, really, in the over 40s, we've still got, you know, almost one in five people to come forward for their first injection. It's really important that they get that protection and still more on the over 30s. But clearly, that has been available for less time.
I was just going to say, sorry, I was just going to, again, Amanda, what implications will that mean for Nottingham if these people don't come forward? And why do you feel that these age ranges aren't coming forward?
So I think there's a combination of things. So I think sometimes, you know, younger people, you know, quite busy with work and family commitments and may feel because there's less, traditionally, it's been talked about, older people have been more vulnerable to coronavirus. I think there may be some elements of people not wanting to come forward for those reasons or not rushing to come forward for those reasons. The reason it's so important is because we know that the average age of people in hospital now is younger than it was. People can still become seriously unwell and need to go to hospital at any age. And we do need as many people to be protected as possible.
Thank you very much.
So I'll start on the second question that you had, which is around the Euros. So I suppose, you know, I'm a Welshman supporting Wales in the Euros. I have to start from an optimistic standpoint in many respects. So, you know, my view of the situation is that for several weeks now, many of the hospitality venues in Nottingham City have worked with the council to ensure that they've got the right processes in place to meet all the regulations and restrictions that are there around groups of people of no more than six or two households gathering together inside. And I think, you know, we've communicated with those venues that are showing the matches and they have those plans in place. And it's just about asking citizens to work with those venues, as they have done over the last two weeks, to abide by the measures that are in place within those venues that are there to protect them and everyone in Nottingham City. And I think the potential for gatherings inside in people's households is something that is important, that we continue to be vigilant about in terms of thinking about, if you are inviting those people around, just remembering that it is six people or two households who should be coming around and watching matches inside, you know, your own home. And that there are simple things we can do to help reduce that transmission, to help us maintain that social distancing, to keep rooms ventilated, to take part in that free rapid lateral flow tests that are available from pharmacies, from ordering online or from our community testing sites. And that all of those factors together can help reduce that risk of transmission and reduce the impact of any gatherings. So, you know, I think it's a positive thing that we're able to, at the stage we are at the moment, able to gather and have some small gatherings where we're able to enjoy things like this together with friends and family. We just need to be very much aware of those measures that are in place to protect ourselves from coronavirus transmission.
Sorry, David, I don't think I was that clear with that. Obviously, the hospitality industry have done a really good job. I think it's more the celebrating in the streets afterwards or getting home from pubs, such as the trams and the network. That was the concern that was raised. And sorry, I wasn't very clear.
So and again, I think we work with many of our colleagues in enforcement to look at how best to manage, you know, those celebrations as they spill out onto the streets and if those gatherings sort of take place. Importantly, transport colleagues and the trams are putting on regular increased and very frequent tram service to try and keep that flow of people and reduce that risk of people gathering, particularly in those indoor areas. So we're talking about on trams. Is it being important to continue to wear face masks? And I think those are the sort of higher risk points for transmission. And the measures are there in place. And it's about making sure that we abide by them to protect each other from them.
I might just add, I don't want to minimise the impact potentially in terms of outbreaks and spread of people casting aside any caution in terms... spread of people casting aside any caution in terms of social distancing. And I understand that that will, sight of that will be a cause of real concern to many people in Nottinghamshire. Because the vast majority of people over many months now have been very careful to comply with the guidance and the restrictions that have been in place. And I know that what we're looking towards for Euro 2020 is a time that is a real kind of mood lifter and a time of enjoyment. Well, depending on which team you support, I'm a bit troubled about David. But for the rest of us, anyway, potential for a real mood lifter and an opportunity to get together with other people. But as we do that, it is really important that we do it in a way that is safe. And David has already reminded us about the rule of six or two households applying to those get-togethers indoors. I ought to just underline too, the excellent work which district and borough councils across Nottinghamshire have also undertaken with the hospitality industry. I know your question was looking a bit wider than that. But they've been hard at work engaging with pubs and other venues which may be screening Euro 2020, working with landlords and staff to ensure that their COVID risk assessments are all really up to date. That means that if you're a resident in Nottinghamshire and going out to enjoy a screening of a Euro 2020 match at a pub, then you should expect to see some of the posters up requesting you to make sure that you register at that venue, which of course is mandatory, and that your details are being collected. And we want to urge people to help landlords with that. You'll also expect to remain seated because that's what the landlord and his or her staff are required to ask of you as well. And other social distancing and face covering type measures will be, still be required. So I think it's really an opportunity for people right across Nottinghamshire to work together so that we can really enjoy Euro 2020 in a way that's really safe.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The next hand I saw up was from Aaron. Aaron Law?
Hiya. Hiya. I hope you're all good. I've just got a couple of questions. I know you sort of touched on earlier about Monday and the potential unlocking of all restrictions. I just wanted to ask, considering the rates in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire, and also maybe the fact that the vaccine uptake in the area is lower than other parts of the country, do you think that this potential talk around a delay of two weeks, maybe four weeks is good or may help us and put us in a better stead?
David, do you want to start off? I think you've partly addressed it already, but do you want to kick off?
Yeah. I think, what I think is best, what I can say is that I think it's good that all the options are on the table at the moment and people are taking this decision as seriously as they are and waiting for the latest data to make that decision. As I highlighted, it's not clear cut. Nottingham is not the only place across the country where rates are rising. It's not the only place across the country where the Delta variant is as dominant as it is. And it is about deciding at the pace at which we move forward. I think we've highlighted before that regardless of that, there will be still things that we will all need to think about doing, be it that twice-weekly testing, be it getting tested when you're symptomatic. Our response in schools and other places will remain similar in terms of our outbreak management processes that we do from a public health aspect. So, so in many respects, I suppose I'm looking towards how myself, as a director of public health here, will respond regardless of what happens on the 21st, in that my role will still be to protect the citizens of Nottingham City. And the way that we do that might change slightly, but it will be very much focused on those core principles that we've applied throughout the pandemic, which is working with settings when we do see multiple linked cases to ensure that they're taking the right precautions and have all the support they need to protect Nottingham citizens. I'm not sure that's necessarily answered your question in full, but I think the main aspect of it is that that we really is a difficult decision to make, but it's important that we use all the data available to us and that all options in terms of thinking about how we take that step forward are considered.
Aaron, thank you for the question. I think in response to it, I would say I don't think any delay is good. And I don't think there are many people who want a delay, but a delay may be necessary. In terms of an overall approach, I think I would say that it's better to move forward cautiously but positively than to rush forward and then to hit a problem, to have to slam on the brakes and then reverse, take reverse measures. So I would be for moving forward cautiously. I'm really encouraged about the uptake of vaccines across Nottinghamshire and the evidence now coming to the fore about how effective they are. But as we can rest confidently on the vaccine programme as long as we also keep going with some of the measures that I mentioned earlier on, some of the things which are basic and easy for us to do around hand washing, for example. And we must expect that if we have symptoms, we should continue to expect to isolate and get ourselves tested. Because in that way, we can, I think, open up all sorts of things in the very near future and look forward with confidence to a summer and autumn beyond it, which are very different perhaps to the ones that we all had to endure last year.
That's great. Thank you. And also, just on the walking weekend in Forest Rec Ground, I just wanted to ask, how big is this operation? And also, why did you, is there a specific reason why we chose or you chose that area?
So we're running this alongside people's booked appointments. So if people have got booked appointments, then those will carry on as normal. This is in addition to that. And we do have a really good number of staff who are on to give people their vaccines. The reason we chose, one of the key reasons is we know that there are still a lot of people in Nottingham to come forward to take up their invite for a vaccine. So that's why we're targeting the Nottingham area as well as Mansfield. So it's around trying to encourage and boost uptake where we know that we still have a number of people to come forward to take up that invite.
Okay. And I know you touched on it earlier, the over 30s and over 40s. Is that one of the groups you're aiming to sort of target in this, in this walking weekend as well?
Absolutely. Because we do know, as I say, there's a good number of people in those age groups who are yet to come forward. So we are absolutely encouraging those people, as well as over 25s and anybody else of any age who has had an invite and for whatever reason hasn't come forward, the door is always open for anyone who is eligible for their vaccine.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. I think the last hand I can see up is Alex Meakin from Gem. Alex, your question?
Hello. Hello. Yes, hello, everyone. I apologise if I've missed anything on this. And if I have, then please just direct me to the YouTube when you upload it. But just a question to anyone who's willing to fill it at this stage. Public Health England in the last hour are reporting that the Delta variant is more resistant to vaccines. I just wondered how much of a concern is that?
I don't know who wants to answer that.
I haven't seen the Public Health England report from the last hour, only that the Techno Report that was released, they release it weekly, so I've seen last week's, which did highlight that there was some drop in effectiveness, particularly around the first dose, but that the second dose of vaccination, and particularly when we're thinking about severe disease and not just having symptoms, the vaccines were still particularly affected, which is why, as a whole, as a whole country, but also particularly within Nottingham City, we've had that push around getting as many people vaccinated, having their second vaccination dose that are eligible to do so and have been asked to come forward to have their second dose. But also getting as many of those people with their first dose so that we can, so that in eight weeks' time, they'll be eligible to have that, their second dose. So I can't comment specifically on that report, but it is something that has been muted previously and we are aware of, and which is what's drives some of our action around getting as many people vaccinated as quickly as possible to get them their full protection.
Perfect. Thank you very much. No, I understand. Obviously, it's just come out in the last hour. So completely understandable. Thank you.
We've all been here. Thank you. There are no, I'll say no new hands up. People still have their hands up from previous questions, but I'm just doing a final check to make sure there are no further questions. No, that's it. Everyone's put their hands down. So thank you for that. I'm now going to sort of go back to our panel and ask them if they've got any last sort of messages or information they want to get across and take the opportunity now to do that. So I'm going to go to Jonathan first. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. So I was just going to add a note, if I might, about some of what you might see going on around Mansfield this weekend as part of the walk-in weekend to grab a jab event that's running there. And I'm really pleased that with partners in Mansfield, including in particular Mansfield District Council, but also working with our local NHS partners and Mansfield Community Voluntary Services, we're going to have a number of COVID marshals and COVID champions out on the streets in neighbourhoods, engaging with residents. There'll be those volunteers, champions and COVID marshals in some instances will be able to answer questions. We'll also have some literature, all of which will be encouraging and enabling local people in the Mansfield area to take advantage of this grab-a-jab opportunity at Mansfield Wicks. So that's really what I'd want to finish on from my side. David, I don't know if there's more that you want to add?
Yeah, just a couple of things really, which, you know, one is around that walk-in weekend. Firstly, I think just to start with a huge thanks. I think, you know, it's been mentioned, a lot has gone on behind the scenes to make this weekend's activity possible, both from Amanda's colleagues in NHS, but also in local authority and in Jonathan's district. So that, you know, there's a lot of work behind the scenes to put on an event like this and to link everything together and ensure that we're making it as accessible as possible. And part of that is that, you know, this, the walking weekend will offer Pfizer vaccines at the Forest Rec site in the city. So it's between 8 and 6, 8am and 6pm on Saturday and Sunday. So everyone who's eligible, particularly those we've mentioned who are 30 years and over, who have not yet had their first vaccine, can walk in without an appointment and grab a jab. And I think it's important, yeah, people can use that opportunity to support each other, come with friends and relatives. And the way that we're helping in the city to facilitate some of that is there will be some two free shuttle buses within the city and that will make it as easy as possible for people to get access to the Forest Rec site and come along to that. And so, again, a thanks to everyone who's organised that, but also it's a huge effort. And hopefully, next week, I'll be thanking the great number of people that have turned up to have a vaccination during the walk-in weekend. On a non-COVID note, I suppose I might just use this opportunity, given that we're talking about it being a lovely weekend, that it would be remiss of me not to use the opportunity to remind people about the fact that it will be a hot weekend and that people should just remember to stay hydrated and get in, use some shade where possible to keep out of the sun if need be, and just protect themselves during the hot weather.
Thank you, David, Jonathan. Amanda, do you have anything you wish to add?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate the point that David touched on on the last question. So it is really important that people are fully vaccinated. And that's why in recent weeks, we have been emphasising the need to attend for your second dose. So I think that is really important, particularly with the emerging findings around the Delta variant. It is more important than ever that you do get fully vaccinated and attend for your second dose. That is, you know, more important than ever. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I think that brings us to the end of the briefing this morning. So I would like to thank each of our panel members for their time this morning, and also thank colleagues who have supported the briefing and of course, members of the media who come to the briefing, hear the messages, ask the questions and then go and, you know, share them, broadcast them, publish them, which is really, really helpful for us in getting those key messages out to all of our audiences across Nottinghamshire and Nottingham City. So thank you very much. And I would just say, enjoy the weekend. It looks like it's going, we're going to have a mini heatwave. So yes, stay safe in the sun, enjoy the football, and we will see you next week. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Abby. Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.